Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, June 18th, 2018. I'd ask that you all please rise for brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as always, we are ever mindful of the great community that we live in and the many services and volunteer efforts that are put forth on a daily basis by so many people to make Batavia such a special place, and we are just expressing our thanks for this blessing. We also tonight want to remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask that those folks, along with all those from our country serving with them, are shown a special blessing as they go about their vital mission. Also tonight, we are ever mindful of those in our community who are sick or infirmed, and we just ask that a special blessing be given to those folks as they try to regain their health. As always, we ask for direction and guidance and understanding and vision as we go about the items of business before us, knowing that each and every one of us here is here to do what we in our best heart and mind is in the best interest of the community of Batavia. We ask for all these blessings, amen.
Amen.
Alderman Rosado, would you lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God in his discipline with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Brown.
Rosado.
Here.
Atack.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Chanset.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Salvati.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan.
Here.
Meitzler.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Euer. Serone.
Here.
McFadden.
So we have 11 present and three absent, is that what?
Yes.
And do we know if we need to have a motion to allow Alderman Chanset to attend by phone?
It's only if somebody has texted.
Nobody's objecting, so. Okay, let the record reflect that we have 10 of us here and 11 of us with Alderman Chanset on the phone. Okay, moving then to item number four, items to be removed, editor changed on the agenda. Alderman Atack, do you have anything?
I do not.
Anybody else? Okay, moving to item five, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Atack is Chairman of Governmental Services Committee, would you present this plate?
The consent agenda reads as follows: Accept and place on file historic preservation commission minutes for May 4th, 2018; planned commission minutes for May 16th, 2018; committee of the whole minutes for May 1st, May 8th, May 14th, May 15th, and May 22nd, 2018; payroll in the amount of $848,191.23; accounts payable check register in the amount of $6,515,115.98; city council minutes for June 4th, 2018; approval of the Class F liquor license application for the Cocktails in the Park event hosted by Batavia Main Street on July 21st, 2018; ordinance 18-40, grant of variance for a detached garage at 836 Garfield Avenue; Andrew Browning applicant; ordinance 18-45, conditional use permit for an animal shelter, Starfish Animal Rescue, at 167 Oswald Avenue; ordinance 18-41, proposing the establishment of a special service area number 63 in the city of Batavia and providing for a public hearing and other procedures in conjunction with the Prairie Commons subdivision residential development; ordinance 18-42, proposing the establishment of a special service area number 64 in the city of Batavia and providing for a public hearing and other procedures in conjunction with the Prairie Commons subdivision commercial development; ordinance 18-31, proposing the establishment of a special service area number 62 for Batavia Main Street; resolution 18-54-R, authorizing execution of construction easement with the property owner at 33 North Island Avenue, Batavia, Illinois, to perform utility stabilization along the Fox River. I move that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Atack, second by Alderman Stark for the approval of the consent agendas presented, any discussion on any of the items? Hearing now, the clerk call the roll, please.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Motion's approved, 11 yes, no no's, three absent. All right, moving to item number six. We are honored this evening to have Scott Corbin in the audience, and Scott's a, I'll describe him as a St. Charles musical instrument company, I guess, and he wants to introduce Madeline Schuster from Batavia who just won an award, so Scott will turn it over to you and you can tell us all about what's happening.
Thank you, Mayor. It's great to see everybody again. My name is Scott Corbin, owner of the Jenk Guitar Store, and I'm here with Madeline Schuster of Batavia High School. Some exciting news is that our ambassador program for the youth, its third year, we just had our ceremony, but it expanded from St. Charles to all of the Tri-Cities, so the first ever Tri-Cities Jenk Ambassador is Madeline Schuster. So if it could, a small round of applause. She's an exceptional youth, and we have an entire year of agenda items for her coming up as the acting ambassador for the Tri-Cities, which includes local initiatives as well as international initiatives. Locally, she's going to be shadowing and interviewing leaders in the community, both at the city government level as well as business level, to learn about leadership firsthand, and then internationally, she's going to be traveling to a similar Tri-Cities community but in France, where she'll be actually meeting with delegates from the city as well as delegates from the school system so that she can learn about their programs and report back to us as a cultural correspondent. So it's going to be a great year to get to know Madeline. Please keep an eye out for all of the activity we'll be sharing with you all, of course, and I certainly want to give a second to Madeline so she can say hi to all of you tonight.
Hi, I'm Madeline, and I don't have a speech prepared, but yeah, I'm a new ambassador, so.
And I want to give a big, special thank you to Mayor Shelkey for coming to our ceremony on June 12th. For all of you, it's been a real pleasure to get to know you individually over the last couple of years introducing this program, and we're just very proud, and especially for you for having Batavia be the first ambassador of the Tri-Cities. It's a wonderful thing, so thank you for your time this evening. If anybody ever has any questions about the program, my name is Scott Corbin, and of course, feel free to shoot us an email, and we look forward to seeing you throughout the next couple of years, so thank you so much. Take care.
Well, we want to, number one, congratulate Madeline on winning this honor, and congratulations to you for really making Batavia shine brightly, and we appreciate that. As you sit, as you stand there, we've got these aldermen, and they represent geographic areas in the community, and as I remember from the ceremony the other night, it was reported you live on Carriage Drive, right? So I think you're a Third Ward resident, so one of the aldermen is a guy on the phone, and the other one is alderman, that's over here, so those are the aldermen that represent your part of the community, so anytime you bring somebody in, we don't say where they live, the aldermen always kind of want to know, is this one of my residents, or who is this? So I thought we better clear the air on that, but we really look forward to you exercising your talents and your great personality and covering Batavia around the world, and certainly a trip to France will help heighten that, so we appreciate, and wish you the best in the year to come, and thanks, Scott, for all he does to kind of promote the Tri-Cities on a more global front, so thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else in the audience? All right, then the next thing is our Main Street report tonight from Jamie Son.
Okay. All right, hi, everybody. First, thank you all for approving to move forward with the SSA, so we'll continue down that process for the next couple of months, so we appreciate your support and the support of the property owners that are behind us, so that we can continue doing what we do in downtown Batavia, which is bringing people down here to get them in front of the businesses. First on the docket would be the Bulldogs are in town, I'm not sure if anybody's stood up here yet and officially said that they're here, but they are. We should have the maps, the printed maps, I think a lot of people have seen the online ones, but we'll have actual printed maps tomorrow, hopefully, if not Wednesday, so the plan is to have them out at the Summer Concert Series on Wednesday night, as well as at the Farmer's Market. We will also have a couple A-frames popped up occasionally on good weather days with some maps in the little pocket there that we can stick them out, so as people are walking around by the Bulldogs, they can grab those and see that there's other Bulldogs to walk around to. I'm sure you guys have already noticed that many people are climbing on them and taking pictures, so, you know, we love it. Next, we, a couple weeks ago, we had our Well Batavia Race to Market and our opening day of the Farmer's Market. So now we've had three weeks of the Farmer's Market. The first day was super successful, great weather, I think everybody had been waiting all season long to get down to the market. We had over 200 racers for the race, we had about 35 vendors for the Well Batavia event, which were local businesses focused on health and wellness, and River Street was packed. If you came down, you saw everybody was down there. The next week, we had some rain, so it was a little bit of a late start for us, just to stay safe, we don't like anybody setting up metal tents when there's lightning, so we waited, and still had a successful day. Then this past week, it was very, very hot, but everyone showed up to shop the Farmer's Market, vendors were selling out, the season has officially kicked off, so we're super excited. We also welcomed the Artisan Collective this past Saturday, which will happen the third Saturdays of every month, so come down and see your regular 30 to 35 Farmer's Market produce, baked goods, all locally sourced vendors on River Street every week, and the third Saturday is the Artisan Collective, which is handmade local artisans that come down. Next up, we have cocktails in the park, so I passed out to you guys flyers for the event, I didn't save one for myself to show, but you guys have those, and then I also passed you each out a ticket, so come with, join us. Hopefully, the windows are going to look lovely on the other side of the building and the twinkling lights in the trees. We'll enjoy an evening on July 21st in Appleton Park on the east side of City Hall. Tickets are on sale on our website at downtownbatavia.com. We are going to sell 500 this year, last year we went over that a little bit, and it got a little bit crowded. We want people to be able to set up a little tablescape for themselves, it's starting to feel more and more like a tiny Ravinia, and we like that, we like that people bring a little outdoor rug down, pop up a table, and then go and enjoy all of our downtown restaurants at the booths that they set up. This is a fundraiser for our organization, our goal is to raise about $20,000 to help us put that back into the community through things like we talked about, the downtown signage, Bat Fest, Egg Hop, different free events that we have around town promoting our Second Fridays, which gets people around to all the businesses, so please come out and support that. It's $30 a ticket, so it's super affordable for you to invite your neighbors, and so get those tickets now, we've already sold, I think, like 125 online. Then, I passed out a sheet for you guys, well, I passed out two sheets, but I only have a copy of one of them. Oh. Oh, man. Well, let me see. Can I do this? Whatever, we're just going to talk about it instead. So, okay, so the blue sheet here that I have, are you going to come do it for me? Okay. Then I'll talk about the other one while he does that. Okay, it's a sheet that lists all the different names on it for you guys, this one, that all of the council members have. So that one's a screenshot, you can, when you're a business page on Facebook, you can follow similar pages to you. So from the top, you've got Downtown Naperville, Aurora Downtown, the Greater St. Charles Region, which is a CVB, Batavia Main Street, Park District, St. Charles Partnership, Geneva Chamber of Commerce, Oswego. So I try to follow pages that are similar to us, similar mission and vision in their downtowns, and what this shows you is that, right, total likes on our page are 5,400, give or take a few, and we're above cities like Geneva, and their chamber is their downtown partnership also, as well as their CVB, which is the Visitors Bureau. Likewise, St. Charles, their downtown partnership, Oswego has a similar downtown mission and vision as we do too. So I just wanted to print that up, I brought that to our Main Street Board to show them where we're kind of at with that activity and how we've increased over time, and I just think that that's a really big success for the visibility that we're able to bring to things that are happening in downtown. Just above us is Downtown Elgin, and it's fine. Is Downtown Elgin, and like I said, the St. Charles CVB, which covers St. Charles, Wasco, Campton Hills, possibly South Elgin, some other communities, Downtown Aurora, the second largest city in our state, and Naperville, which is a huge tourist destination. So I just think that those are impressive numbers that I wanted to share with you guys, that we're able to put the word out about the businesses and the activities that are happening in our downtown in that way, out to the public, and through social media, which is very active right now. So on the blue sheet, you'll just, I'm not going to go over all of that, that's for you guys to take, just for some information. It has some of our social media numbers, it also has some of our economic stats, information about our budget, volunteers, and just in a little infographic kind of way, so you guys can see that in a nice little package there. Back to the Bulldogs really quick, I did pass out the passports also, just in case you guys haven't grabbed one of those at any of the businesses. So these are at 10 different businesses in downtown, there are the smaller Bulldogs, you can buy raffle tickets to win those, but you can also pick up one of these paper passports at Kay Hollis Jewelers, Batavia Family Dental, Beards Guard, All Spoked Up, Kiss the Sky, Funway, Chapters, Urban Style, J. De Carlo Salon and Spa, and The Tea Tree. And you, when you make a purchase, you get stamped, and you can enter to win raffle prizes, Bulldog Unleashed raffle prizes, of course, so a good way to get people around to the businesses and participating, so make sure you guys bring those around when you're out and about in downtown. Finally, I just wanted to, I had invited Casey Hoag, she's a new business owner in downtown, but she was unable to be here today, I'm going to try and get her to come down here next month, because then she'll have a month under her belt, but her and her partner opened Six Plus Cypress, they had their kickoff just this past week, it's a boutique store at 239 West Wilson Street. I'll have her give more details next week about the store, but they are a fun, affordable fashion store, offering trends for your closet and your home, men, you can shop for your ladies, it's all ladies stuff, but it's adorable. I spent way too much money in there the first day, you will enjoy it, or your wives, or your girlfriends, or your sisters will love it. Their hours currently are Monday through Wednesday, 10 to 6, Thursday, 10 to 8, Friday, 10 to 5, same with Saturday, and Sunday, 12 to 4, and I believe it's SixPlusCyprus.com. They started with an online store and then have another location in St. Louis, and when Casey, the second half of the duo, moved up here, she decided to open a location up here as well. So I think because of that background, they should have a lot of success. They're right next to Dazo Photography, Jody Dazo Photography, up by the dress shop, if you don't know where that is, so make sure you stop in and say hello in those hours that they're open, and that's all I've got for you guys tonight. Thank you, any questions?
Is there going to be any deadline for people that want to buy a ticket to cocktails in the park, because when the 500's sold, that's it?
When the 500's sold, that's it. We'll try to keep people updated, like I said, we're right around 120, so we've got a little bit of time, but we'll keep pushing that. I think an article just came out in the Chronicle about it, so I assume we will have another uptick in sales, you know, we'll, I think there will be tickets available until right before the event. A lot of people don't want to buy tickets until they know what the weather's going to be like, because it's kind of scary sometimes, so, but get them now, just to be safe. Anyone else?
Any other questions, Jamie?
No. All right, thank you.
Okay, moving to item number eight, which is a proclamation for National Suicide Prevention Month for September 2018. Alderman Wolf, were you presenting it?
Yes, thank you. We do have, Rachel McCormick is here from Suicide Prevention to accept the proclamation from you, and I'll read that. Whereas September is known in the around the United States as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and it is intended to help promote awareness surrounding each of the suicide prevention resources available to us and our community, the simple goal is to learn how to help those around us and how to talk about suicide without increasing the risk of harm. And whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background, and whereas, according to the CDC, each year more than 41,000 people die by suicide, whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of death among adults in the U.S. and the second leading cause of death among people aged 10 to 24, and whereas Batavia, Illinois is no different than any other community in the country, but chooses to publicly state and place our full support behind local educators, mental health professionals, athletic coaches, PAC leaders, police officers, and parents as partners in supporting our community and simply being available to one another, and whereas local organizations like Suicide Prevention Services and national organizations like the National Alliance on Mental Illness are on the front lines of a battle that many still refuse to discuss in public, as suicide and mental illness remain too taboo a topic to speak on, and whereas every member of our community should understand that throughout its life struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that we are all silently fighting our own battles, and whereas, I encourage all residents to take time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, friends, and neighbors over the next few days, and to genuinely convey their appreciation for their existence by any gesture that they deem appropriate. A simple phone call, a message, a handshake, a hug can go a long way towards helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of the City of Batavia, do hereby proclaim September 2018 as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Batavia, Illinois. I'll make the motion that we accept the proclamation as read.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Stark for the approval of the proclamation for National Suicide Prevention Month. Any discussion? Clerk call the roll, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Resolution 18-73-R is approved, 13 yes, no no's, three absent.
Moving to item 11, which is Resolution 18-71-R, approving a grant of easement with LaSalle National Trust for Dam Signage and Lighting. Who's got this?
I do. Yes. The city's been working on getting a lighting and signage plan and work done at the North Batavia Dam site, this is one of the easements that we needed to set up to gain access to it and to be able to put the lighting and the signs that are required for us to have insurance coverage on the dam, so I'm excited to say that we're doing this on an evening when Mr. Brown is not here. He'll forgive me for that, maybe.
You making a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 18-73-R, approving a grant of easement.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Metzler for the approval of Resolution 18-71-R. Any further discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Resolution 18-71-R is approved, 13 yes, no no's, three absent.
Moving to item 11, which is Resolution 18-71-R, approving a grant of easement with LaSalle National Trust for Dam Signage and Lighting. Who's got this?
I do. Yes. The city's been working on getting a lighting and signage plan and work done at the North Batavia Dam site, this is one of the easements that we needed to set up to gain access to it and to be able to put the lighting and the signs that are required for us to have insurance coverage on the dam, so I'm excited to say that we're doing this on an evening when Mr. Brown is not here. He'll forgive me for that, maybe.
You making a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 18-71-R, approving a grant of easement.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Metzler for the approval of Resolution 18-71-R. Any further discussion? Alderman, what do you take?
I'll just add, I hope his dog doesn't jump four feet, because I know that my dog will jump that extra foot, so I hope it works for him.
Anybody else? Clerk call the roll, please.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Resolution 18-73-R is approved, 13 yes, no no's, three absent.
Moving to item 11, which is Resolution 18-71-R, approving a grant of easement with LaSalle National Trust for Dam Signage and Lighting. Who's got this?
I do. Yes. The city's been working on getting a lighting and signage plan and work done at the North Batavia Dam site, this is one of the easements that we needed to set up to gain access to it and to be able to put the lighting and the signs that are required for us to have insurance coverage on the dam, so I'm excited to say that we're doing this on an evening when Mr. Brown is not here. He'll forgive me for that, maybe.
You making a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 18-71-R, approving a grant of easement.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Metzler for the approval of Resolution 18-71-R. Clerk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Resolution 18-73-R is approved, 13 yes, no no's, three absent. Moving to item 11, which is Resolution 18-71-R, approving a grant of easement with LaSalle National Trust for Dam Signage and Lighting. Who's got this?
I do. Yes. The city's been working on getting a lighting and signage plan and work done at the North Batavia Dam site, this is one of the easements that we needed to set up to gain access to it and to be able to put the lighting and the signs that are required for us to have insurance coverage on the dam, so I'm excited to say that we're doing this on an evening when Mr. Brown is not here. He'll forgive me for that, maybe.
You making a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 18-71-R, approving a grant of easement.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Metzler for the approval of Resolution 18-71-R. Any further discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?[1705.21]
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Serrone?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Resolution 18-71-R is approved. Eleven yes, no-nos, three absent. Moving to item 12 on the agenda, which is resolution 18-74-R, approving an intergovernmental agreement with Kane County Forest Preserve for dam signage and lighting. Alderman Wolf, do you have this?
I do have this one. This is the intergovernmental agreement with Kane County Forest Preserve. We've been working in cooperation with the forest preserve to install the signing and lightage at the north dam site. This was drafted by our attorney and reviewed by the Forest Preserves Board, basically containing the, these following general conditions. The forest preserve grants the city permission to install various signage and lighting on their property along the river. The city agrees to install, maintain, and remove the signs and lights in perpetuity, and the city agrees to indemnify the forest preserve on them. No questions, I'll make the motion that we approve resolution 18-74-R.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Salvati. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Serrone?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Resolution 18-74-R is approved. Eleven yes, no-nos, three absent. Moving to item 13, which is resolution 18-72-R, approving a contract with Parven Cost Sign Company Incorporated for the construction of the North Batavia Dam signage and lighting plan for an amount not to exceed $71,403.15. Alderman Wolf, do you have this?
Yes, this is the expensive part of it. It's actually paying for the lights and the signs to go out there, and footings for everything to be put into, some rock removal, tree brush clearing, you know, quite a few things else that'll happen out there. But this is for that contract. So I'll make the motion that we approve resolution 18-72-R.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Stark for the approval of resolution 18-72-R. Any discussion? Alderman O'Brien?
I just want to say, we haven't heard back from the attorney, and so it's not definitive that we own the dam yet. So I am supporting this only to keep our residents safe. And hopefully, we'll get some definitive, something definitive from the attorney, and we can then move forward.
Any other discussion? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Serrone?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Janzett?
Aye.
Resolution 18-74-R is approved. Eleven yes, no-nos, three absent. Moving to item 14, which is resolution 18-17-R, IDOT permit for road closures for the 2018 July 4th fireworks display. Who's got this one? Alderman Wolf?
This is the fun part of the year here. We are ready for the fireworks display on July 4th, and this will be closing Wilson Street and Main Street during the fireworks. Anybody have any questions? I'll make the motion that we approve resolution 18-76-R.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Serrone for the approval of resolution 18-76-R for the road closures for 4th of July. Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Serrone?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Janzett?
He had to step away from his phone. He just texted me and told me he wouldn't be available for this roll call.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So that one is approved. Ten yes, no-nos, four absent. Moving to item 14, which is resolution 18-16-R, IDOT permit for road closures for the 2018 July 4th fireworks display. Who's got this one? Alderman Wolf?
This is the fun part of the year here. We are ready for the fireworks display on July 4th, and this will be closing Wilson Street and Main Street during the fireworks. Anybody have any questions? I'll make the motion that we approve resolution 18-76-R.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Serrone for the approval of resolution 18-76-R for the road closures for 4th of July. Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Serrone?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Resolution 18-71-R is approved. Eleven yes, no-nos, four absent. Okay, moving to item 16, which is resolution 18-78-R, approving an agreement between the City of Batavia and the Fraternal Order of Police Sergeants for the time period of January 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2018. Who's got this one?
I think I do, but Wendy, would you like to go over the details?
Good evening. As you're aware of, we had both of our police contracts for police sergeants and police officers expired December 31st, and through the good faith collective bargaining process, we've reached an agreement that we bring before you this evening. There, it is a one-year agreement, and we hope to very quickly be sitting back down at the table with them, and hopefully, we can get some longer-year agreements out years. There isn't a lot of, I guess you'd say, significant changes, being that it's a one-year agreement. Probably the largest thing is the wage increase of 2.75, which is similar to other groups that have received, and just some small changes to some operational changes to help the department run that much better. So with that, I would bring before you or recommend the approval of the agreement.
So I move, we recommend, resolution 18-78-R, authorizing the execution of an agreement between the City of Batavia and the Illinois Fraternal Order of Police Lodge, two 24 police sergeants.
Second.
Moved by Alderman ATAC, second by Alderman Callahan for the approval of ordinance 18-78-R for the agreement between the City of Batavia and the Fraternal Order of Police Sergeants for the agreement. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Janzett?
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Serrone?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Resolution 18-79-R is approved. Eleven yes, no-nos, four absent. Moving to item 17, which is resolution 18-79-R, approving of agreement with the City of Batavia and the Fraternal Order of Police Officers, Patrol Officers for January 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2018. Alderman ATAC?
Would you like to go? There are a few different things here.
Yeah, just a few different. Similar in the fact that it is a one-year agreement that we bring before you for this year, beginning January 1st, ending December 31st. They are primarily similar items, but just a few different ones. The wage rates are the same, which is 2.75, and there has been some small additions to certifications in regards to master patrol sergeant, as well as clarifying some holiday and personnel, personal workdays in regards to people for overtime. All of the other items are very similar, so.
Thank you.
I move, we approve resolution 18-79-R, authorize the execution of an agreement between the City of Batavia and the Illinois Fraternal Order of Police Lodge, two 24 police officers.
Second.
Moved by Alderman ATAC, second by Alderman Callahan for the approval of resolution 18-79-R, agreement between the City of Batavia and the Fraternal Order of Police Officers for a time period of January 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2018. Alderman ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Janzett?
Aye.
Resolution 18-79-R is approved. Ten yes, no-nos, four absent. Okay, moving to 18, which is the administrator's report, and as you all know, Laura is not present this evening. So does anybody in the staff have anything? I, nobody told me we were going to, so I'm just asking. All right, go to committee reports. Alderman Brown is absent for community development, so.
It's me.
Alderman Stark?
Tomorrow night's COW is canceled. Wednesday night's planned commission meeting is canceled, and historic preservation is still on the schedule for June 25th. The meeting starts at 5:30. On June 26th, the COW, ordinance 1846 is a grant of variance for monument sign, and ordinance 1847 annexing part of 1381 Chao Tao Go Street, and resolution 1875-R, approving a platte subdivision for City Hall peg subdivision. And that's all that's on the calendar for community development.
Government Services doesn't have anything on the agenda at this point through June.
Okay. City Services, Alderman Wolf?
We do not have anything on the agenda.
Community Develop, or Public Utilities, Alderman O'Brien?
Your Honor, we have nothing on the agenda.
Boy, you guys are good.
We're not having a meeting tomorrow.
Do we have anything under other business?
Your Honor, I do have one thing.
Alderman Wolf?
I had a lot of things to try to keep track of tonight. I wanted to invite everybody to the inaugural Bulldog Block Party that's going to be out at Pal Joey's Pizza on Saturday, June 30th, from 6:00 to 11:00 p.m. Out at the new restaurant location, now that they have this big giant parking lot out there, they're going to clear it all out and not let anybody park in it and have a party in it. So this is going to be a fundraiser for all the sports teams through the boosters, just a great location for it. I think this will be really an interesting thing that they'll probably try and do every year at some point during the summer. So tickets are available at Bulldog Block Party 2018, if I can read this, at easyregister.com. I think that's what it says.
Is this going to be now an annual event?
I believe it's going to become an annual event, so that they can do something with, you know, a lot of kids that stick around town during the summer, a neat event. And then there's also going to be music from 8:00 to 11:00 p.m. there, so it looks like a fun time.
Anybody else?
Just briefly, just wanted to recognize public works. The hanging baskets on Wilson Street are just beautiful, and it's good to see.
Anybody else? Well, going to the mayor's report, I want to call your attention to Alderman Salvati's desk, and right behind it is this array of very attractive furniture, which, as I understand it, has been donated to the Batavia Fireworks Committee by Barco Products, Searl Manor, and it's going to be offered up in an auction, or not an auction, a lottery, you're going to sell lottery tickets?
Raffle.
Raffle tickets. And it'll be, those will be picked at the fireworks show. So it is beautiful furniture, and so we didn't know where we could show it, so after the fireworks event the other night, we carried it in the room here, and I had him put it over there in the corner, so that way I figured nothing else, it'll get on TV.
Chairs.
Alderman Salvati is doing a great job of pointing it out. But if, you know, by looking at the camera angles, if people are watching on TV, this is really well-made, very beautiful tables and chairs.
Solid.
Solid. So it's nice furniture. Alderman ATAC?
Is it, are there three items or one item? Three, it's two sets. And a bench?
It's one table with four chairs, another table with four chairs, and then the bench.
So there's three different things that you can buy raffle tickets for.
And just keep buying raffle tickets.
Lots of them.
This coming 4th of July will mark the 68th continuous year, never had a break, in which the community of Batavia, every year since 1950, has celebrated a 4th of July patriotic fireworks program in town. And the true sense of pride here is the fact that in 68 years, we have never used any tax dollars to buy fire, any of the fireworks, to fire the fireworks program. All the money over 68 years, which I will tell you now what it costs to fire this show, is a monumental price of amount of money. We're into the hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars that Batavia has raised over the years to fire 68 continuous shows. And I think it speaks well for the patriotic sense of community that we have in Batavia, and certainly is an outstanding tribute to our country, that we are one of the few communities around here who does this kind of unique activity. And as the police department tells me, at the end of this show, when we probably bring over 15,000 people out there in some proximity to that field out there south of Batavia High School, that it is without any question the biggest traffic jam we have in Batavia in the entire year. Nothing else comes anywhere near to it than that event. And so they've now got it figured out as a science, because the first problem you have is it's dark. The second problem you have is you got 15,000 people running, roaming around out there, and it's, you know, there's not a lot of lights. So the next thing that they have to do is basically shut Main Street totally down for about a half-hour period of time, till all the pedestrians and walkers and stray people get themselves out of there. And then they open up the street, and then that can kind of adds to the momentum of the traffic back up, but there's probably no way to better to do it. I think we figured out the only way that's safe, and really kind of puts the whole thing in perspective. So if you go, you need to know that getting out of there may take a few minutes, because we've got everybody we got to watch out for, and there's a lot of moving pieces and parts to that thing. But they've really do a nice job with it, and it's really one of the highlights for the city every year that we do this. And the whole show was started 68 years ago by the Batavia Fire Department, right after World War II, as kind of a community building activity. And as I reported the other night at the Rotary anniversary that I attended, looked back in the records, and the first time that they fired the show in 1950, they spent $200 on fireworks, which I'm sure in 1950 was looked upon as a lot of money, and that, you know, to get the thing kind of in gear and started, the Batavia Rotary donated $50 or a quarter of the cost to fire that first show. And so we've done it every year since, always on donated money, and it's a tradition that I'm very proud of as a community, because I think it speaks to our spirit as a town. So that being said, I encourage us all to go, and I want to thank all of you who came down last Sunday night and helped at the ice cream social that we had here, because that was very helpful to the fundraising. At the end of the night, we raised several thousand dollars to help put on the show. So thank everybody for coming down and helping out. This past week, I had the opportunity, as I just mentioned, to be invited to the 70th birthday party or anniversary of the Batavia Rotary Club. And they began 70 years ago in 1948 as a club, and they have been in business ever since then. And they certainly have been a strong supporter of the community on a lot of fronts, and they were the ones that helped kick off, again, about 68 years ago, the Batavia Toy Drive, again, at the Fire Department. In those days, the firemen repaired broken toys, and after the toy got repaired, the rotary came down on December 23rd with trucks, and they loaded all the toys onto trucks, and then they took them to families that had been identified in Batavia. And I think it speaks well for the patriotic sense of community that we have in Batavia, and certainly is an outstanding tribute to our country, that we are one of the few communities around here who does this kind of unique activity. And as the police department tells me, at the end of this show, when we probably bring over 15,000 people out there in some proximity to that field out there south of Batavia High School, that it is without any question the biggest traffic jam we have in Batavia in the entire year. Nothing else comes anywhere near to it than that event. And so, they've now got it figured out as a science, because the first problem you have is it's dark. The second problem you have is you got 15,000 people running, roaming around out there, and it's, you know, there's not a lot of lights. So, the next thing that they have to do is basically shut Main Street totally down for about a half hour's period of time, till all the pedestrians and walkers and stray people get themselves out of there, and then they open up the street, and then that can kind of adds to the momentum of the traffic backup, but there's probably no way to, better to do it. I think we've figured out the only way that's safe, and really kind of puts the whole thing in perspective. So, if you go, you need to know that getting out of there may take a few minutes, because we've got everybody we got to watch out for, and there's a lot of moving pieces and parts to that thing. But they've really do a nice job with it, and it's really one of the highlights for the city every year that we do this. And the whole show was started 68 years ago by the Batavia Fire Department, right after